Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's called meeting for Friday, March the 12th. I will call the meeting to order. And Board members, we need to go into closed session just briefly after the meeting. So may I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Blackwell, second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will begin with our discussion item, which is 3.1. It's the school reopening plan, and I will turn this over to Acting Superintendent Brian Schultz.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, I guess, for Chair Grimsley and members of the Board and members of our community and Ms. Wagner. I'd like to go ahead and just give a brief update on our data and then take a look at the recent legislation, Senate Bill 220 that's been passed, and then our recommendations that we formulated with school board leadership and with staff leadership in the district to present a plan for 612 moving into Plan A. So with that, I think I have, oh yeah, there we go. All right, so let's take a look at this data. This is data as of yesterday, Thursday afternoon, and we look at our COVID dashboard that we have, and we take a look at all of our metrics are now either in the the blue column or the green column. So the green column meaning containment, the blue column, which is stands for the moderate to accelerated level of community spread. And if you remember last week and looking at this, the first three data points were actually in the yellow, which is the tipping point. And so we've shifted, everything is either in blue or green this week. So very quickly, we'll just go over those. So the cases per day, per 100,000 people over the last 14 days. So for 100,000 people every day, we're seeing about 19 cases, positive cases of COVID. Metric two, the average cases per day in the county, you know, we have around 219,000 residents in Cabarrus County, so we're seeing about 41 positive cases per day over the last 14 days. Metric three, our new cases in the last 14 days, the total of that is at 568. And then, so we look at the percent positive, that continues to slide down. Two weeks ago, we were at 7.6, last week at 5.6, and then this week, as you see, we're at 5.2. Number of hospitalizations has dipped dramatically. There are about around 20 total COVID cases at Northeast right now, with 12 of those being Cabarrus County residents. That has shifted us into the green, the containment phase. And metric six, looking at the weekly cases in our age group, are 5 to 17, which represents most of the school-aged children. Now, I know that that also means it's all students in Cabarrus County, ones that go to charter schools, ones that go to Cabarrus County Schools, private, and home and charter. So we have about 44 positive cases in that age group, school-age group. And then if we look at metric seven, that's our 25 to 64-year-old age group. So if you think about who is in that age group, it's teachers, it's parents and grandparents. It's a really important group that impacts all of our students and impacts us here in the school system, and we had 146 positives in that age group range. Moving on to the last three metrics, take a look at the evidence of transmission within the school building and number of schools reported by CHA or principal. That's in the zero to five range. I will tell you, so that is actually zero as of yesterday, but we did actually, late yesterday afternoon, did have a cluster, our first cluster reported in the county. So I think it's important to be transparent about that. And a cluster is defined by, in the medical terms, is a, is five or more cases that are linked. So we did report that. It is contained, there is no spread now as a result of that. People have been notified and addressed, so I do think that's important to note that. But it's also important to note that it's March 12th, and that's the first time that has happened in our school district. So I, that's, again, it's really a tip of the hat to the great job that everybody's doing with following the protocols. Metric nine, the schools on Plan C, we don't have any, we've not had to move any schools to Plan C, nor have we had to close any classrooms, nor have we had to close any grade levels. And then lastly, the metric 10, which is about our staffing of essential personnel. We take a look at, we had 50 staff, and this is as of Monday, we had 50 staff members that had been quarantined. Again, that's positives and close contacts. And then we also had 106 students that were quarantined. And so, again, I always point out, we have close to 5,000 employees. So 50 is a very minimal number, and we have close to 33,000 students. So 106 is also a very minimal number. And when you think about that in terms of how we have 43 schools, so that averages about, you know, two, between two and three for the number of students per school, and a little over one per school in terms of the staff size. Now, that's not the way, it's not evenly distributed that way, but if you just think about it in terms of the number of schools that we have and the number of staff and students that we have, it's a very minor impact in terms of the quarantines. So moving on to Senate Bill 220, it was actually introduced publicly on Wednesday as a part of a bipartisan compromise of both the Senate and the House minority-majority leaders, as well as the governor. And so they had a public proclamation on that on Wednesday, and so we quickly went into work about related to that bill. So let's take a look at some of the main components of it. It does require all K-5 students to open in Plan A within 21 days of the bill signing. Now, I will say that we, we already met all of these components that we were going to review, and the, the second bullet is the one that we're going to discuss today. So it's allowing grades 6 to 12 to operate either A or B the rest of the school year. So we know that in 612, we already operate in Plan B, so we'll have the discussion about Plan A this afternoon. And then if the LAA wants to move, grades 612 under Plan A must submit a plan to the Department of Health and Human Services for review. Now, they cannot reject it, they can just review and give feedback. And then we also must, we must agree to participate with the ABC Collaborative for Data Monitoring. So we'd be sharing COVID-related data with the collaborative. They then do research on that and then also offer recommendations on best practices related to COVID-19 practices within schools. And then also, 612, they've recommended that for students that have IEPs or 504s, that we must offer a Plan A option for them. We already do that. In fact, we go above and beyond that by having our homeless students, as well as our English learners, offered a four-day-a-week option as well, and many of our students have taken us up on that, that option. And then we must continue a remote-only option. And then with the last two items, we are, have the ability to adjust the calendar, to put in teacher workdays as needed, to make sure that we are prepared as we shift our plans. And then lastly, the governor retains the authority to close schools by county or district, but not statewide for the remainder of this 2021 school year. And so the plan that was created in partnership with board leadership and district leadership, it was, it's as such. So let me go through that. So we talked, obviously, about meeting today. You see that as the first, first item up there, to discuss a Plan A proposal for grades 612. On March, as soon, as soon as that's reviewed and if any vote is made and in favor of that, then we would look at sending commitment forms out to all students in grades 6 through 12 on Monday. Those commitment forms would be due on March 18th, which is Thursday, which would allow staff about two weeks of school time to prepare for students to return to school, arrangements in classrooms, and any transportation preparations that we would need to make. So that would be the timeline, all the way up to April 1st, which is the Thursday. And if, if you've been counting down days to spring break, you know that starts April 2nd. So that would give staff, leading up to the spring break timeframe, enough time to be able to situate the school, situate transportation, and then make any arrangements going into spring break. And then coming out of spring break, the last day of that is Sunday, April 11th. So we look at Monday, April 12th. We would take advantage of some of that legislation, and we would cap that as a staff workday, meaning that all employees must report that day, to make final Plan A preparations. So coming out of spring break, somebody might have changed their minds, somebody may have, you know, made a mistake on something, so this, there may be some last-minute preparations that need to, to be made. We need to make sure buses are in working order, coming out of a nine- or 10-day layoff. So that'll allow for the final preparations to start a K-12 Plan A and Plan C operation from April 13th through the end of the school year. And that, defined a little bit further, would be Monday through, through Thursday as a face-to-face option, and Fridays as an asynchronous option as well. So taking a look at the calendar portion of that, so it's a little, a little bit smaller, a little bit difficult to see, so we will zoom in on the days that are probably most important. So the main change to the remainder, the remaining of the calendar year would be that April 12th that you see there in green as a capped workday for all staff, including elementary, middle, and high school. And then we had lots of questions, well, why don't you just do five days a week? And there is some rationale for that, and I want to offer that up. So this would be the rationale for the four-day face-to-face, one-day asynchronous option, starting with a focus on our students that are struggling the most. So I'd have to give a shout-out to our middle school teachers and leaders. They came up with a plan called Second Chance Fridays, and what they are doing is offering middle school students who failed a course in first quarter or second quarter the opportunity to, to work on mastering those concepts and raising their grade. So we're really excited about that. In fact, that's gone so well that now elementary, some elementaries are already doing something similar, and some teachers are already doing something similar, as well as high school. But now, that's been so successful that elementary and high school are going to follow suit and offer something very similar where students that are struggling come in for some focused intervention time to make sure that they understand and master the concepts for their particular class or grade level. So we have that, just the focus on intervening. And then that also still allows for teachers to pull small groups, to focus on students for concepts, and that can be either remote or in-person. And then also, Fridays are used for communication with students and parents, anytime somebody's absent, to follow up with that, to find out, to allow parents to catch up on the progress of their students. And then the third bullet is looking at assessment time for virtual students. We were really successful in, after the first semester with our EOC testing, our high school testing. We had a, an assessment rate on the EOCs of 96.1%, where the state-wide average was about 89%. And, and we really attribute that, one, to just some dogged determination of staff to make sure that students get what they need, and then also take the required assessments, and, and also the allowing virtual students who are taking assessments to be able to come into the building on Fridays to do that. And so the assessment types that I'm talking about, like, right now, we have the access testing going on for all of our English language learners, which is a federal, federally-required assessment. We have students testing two-day on that, that were remote students and some face-to-face as well. And then we also have the EOG testing window for our elementary students, actually starts on May 7th, so that seems really soon, but, but the window starts May 7th. And then shortly thereafter, we have the EOCs that start a couple of weeks later for our middle, for our high school students. So, and then lastly, we also have at the beginning of May, our AP and IB exams at the high school level. So that allows for that, the remote students to be able to do that on Fridays. And then, of course, the, the planning for live instruction, face-to-face instruction and live virtual instruction is a heavier lift on our teachers. So it allows them to have that opportunity to plan for that heavy lift on Fridays, obviously to meet with their grade level, to share that planning, and then meet with their administrators as their administrators see fit. We also have professional learning that gets scheduled on those days, and let's not forget the deep cleaning that needs to take place as a result of the pandemic. And, and then also, currently, our short-term subs are assigned Monday through Thursday, but not Friday. Now, we could make some adjustments in that if necessary, but that is one, right now, that is, that is, would be something we'd have to overcome. So with that, that's some justifications and some rationale for why we do Fridays asynchronously, plan work for students online, and then to also be able to intervene well with the students that are struggling, and especially since we are pushing towards the end of this school year. So, and then lastly, this plan was vetted through multiple groups in the last two days, and we've heard from a lot of people, and I will just say, there's been some universal feedback that's just been consistent about the rollout, the time of this. The rollout is, it gives enough notice to allow folks to respond and prepare that, so we, we, and then I would say that we did learn, making a shift at Middle and High School, bringing the students back on the 13th as opposed to the 29th, we were planning for that before for Plan B. So now that we're going A, there's a few more preparations, so we'd actually start those students in Middle and High School on the 13th. And so we did, we did talk to multiple stakeholders, and I'll just have to say thank you to the people that received a very quick invitation and responded very quickly to that. So our middle and high school principals, we had a 4:30 session on Thursday, on Wednesday afternoon. We also had a 7 o'clock, a 7:00 AM session, because our high school principals, they're early birds, and they like those, they like those early meetings. So we had a 7 o'clock meeting with them to get feedback, so, and some, some that couldn't make one just attended the other. So, and then on, also on March 11th, we had a meeting with the middle and high school teacher reps from all the Cabarrus County schools to give feedback on, on this plan. And then today, I met with, with Ms. Adcock, we met with the high school student reps, and they gave feedback on the plan as well. And then we met with the Cabarrus County Schools COVID-19 Task Force at lunchtime today, and they were, they provided feedback as well. And I could say, of any time that I can ever remember, the feedback was, there was, I guess there wasn't any disagreement in the feedback, is the way I would put it. The feedback was consistent with each group. They, they liked the shift of Middle and High School, the timeliness of it, the ability to be able to plan and prep for the transportation side. And I will note, on the transportation side, that Mr. Whitaker, our transportation director, when I brought this plan to him, I really thought, we'd probably have to do middle school for a couple of weeks and then do high school a couple of weeks after, so he, he could make sure that his team was prepared. And when he looked at it, he said, no, we can, we can make it happen. We can do middle and high school together, which means they're at a good, a good point with the drivers. And, you know, of course, you see the rate of infections are down, so he felt like his staff would be ready, ready to go to handle 6 through 12 all in one time. So we're very thankful for his leadership and the ability to get our bus drivers vaccinated and behind the wheel serving students. So with that, I think that, I think I'll open it up for any questions and discussions at this time, for this moving 612 to Plan A starting on April the 13th.
So, Brian, I want to make sure we're good. So April 13th, is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's 6 through 12?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so just for our viewing audience, all board members are here with the exception of Ms. Sandage and Mr. Walter, and they are on the line with us. Ms. Sandage, can you hear us?
I can. Hello?
Mr. Walter, are you on? Okay, he may not be with us quite yet. Okay, so Board members, I'm going to just open it up for questions, and Ms. Adcock, I will start with you.
I don't have any questions since I was on the task force meeting today and heard all the feedback, so I think that we're good, good to go.
Okay. Mr. Fur?
No, no questions, just pleased with how quick they got things done.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, I have a couple. First of all, guidelines. I know under A, basically, they don't have the same guidelines we normally have, which is the social distancing, you know, that we had in the other guidelines. Is there any social distancing we're going to do? Are we going to require masking? Are we going to require the hand washing? What kind of, if we are going to have that, what are we going to have? I mean, I've got, do you want to write down all my questions, or do you want me to give you one at a time?
I'll cover them all. Go ahead.
Well, I have some other ones, okay. With that, the other thing, the, I know that you had sent me something back that, you know, trying to find out how many vaccinations we've done. It's really hard to say what we've done at this time, because the teachers or the bus drivers or everything may have gotten their vaccinations other than, say, the Health Alliance. And that's always been one of my top priorities, to make sure that we get our staff vaccinated. We're doing great. I am very encouraged at what we're seeing with our, our metrics, with our numbers. I mean, we're doing wonderful. And I don't want to be Chicken Little and say, oh, the sky's falling, the sky's falling. And so I'm very, very pleased at where we're at right now. So I don't want to see us go backwards in, in things, you know, us do this, and then all of a sudden us take 10-step back, 10 steps backwards. So I would like to see us get the vaccinations for the staffs that have not gotten it. And what I'm wondering is, could we possibly now that they, the state has said, okay, we can get our staffs vaccinated, is it possible, since we do have nurses on, on our campuses, is it going, is it possible for us possibly to get the vaccination where we could have our nurses vaccinate our staff or even our students if the parents would allow it, so we can get everybody vaccinated? That's the big thing now, to get these shots in the arms of the people that want it. Now, I'm not saying, you know, do it to everybody, but if they want it, to make sure they get vaccinated. So I just wonder if that is possibly a, you know, possibility, so we can get people vaccinated. So that, that is another question to see, if this is something we possibly could do, because we've got a little time, time between now and when this could possibly be done. So that's something that I would like to check, because that is a concern that I have.
So can I recap your questions, just so we don't get lost in that?
Okay.
Okay, so you're asking about the social distancing aspects, which all this was covered by the task force today with Mr. Schultz, so he'll answer these, no problem. But social distancing, the three Ws, and if we can, the update on the staff and the students' vaccinations.
Well, he gave me a number, but see, possibly, if we could possibly do vaccinations in the schools, since we do have nurses there now that, because originally, when we asked, they said, well, the staff really wasn't in that group. Well, now they say they are, and they're talking about trying to get everybody vaccinated within a certain time frame, and see if this is something we possibly could do.
Okay, so was that all of your questions, just those two?
I think that, I think, that, that's my main ones at this point.
Okay, I too, but let's let him address those two, and then if you think of some other.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. So those are real important questions, and so the first thing is I brought, I just knew somebody might ask that, so I actually brought this. This is a document, it's called the Strong Schools NC Public Health Toolkit. This is what, I keep this on my desktop, and I refer to it anytime I get a question like that, because I don't want to quote it wrong. And in fact, this document was mentioned in the legislation as well, that this, this is our, you know, this is what we're referring to. It was originally published, believe it or not, on June 30th, 2020, seems like a lifetime ago, but it was just recently updated on March 4th. So it's a very recent and relevant document from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So it does cover, so, so basically, the, the answer is on the hand washing and the masking and the distancing, nothing has changed except for the, the distancing requirements on buses and in classrooms. Everything else, we're still masking, we're still frequently washing hands outside of the classroom, you maintain six feet of distance. So that's kind of the quick answer, is that everything stays the same except for the distancing requirements in classrooms and on the buses. And then in terms of the vaccinations, and so there have been 1,300 Group 3 people in Cabarrus County who have been vaccinated at this point, and that's, so, and that comes from the Health Alliance, and they are the ones that, they're, they're tracking their own. What they're not yet able to do is track what Novant does, or what, what Atrium Health does, or what Walgreens is doing, or I think Harris Teeter soon is doing. So, but if you think about 1,300, and then there's all these other options, and we've been sending those out frequently to all of our staff, we, we are, feel pretty sure about the fact that those that want vaccinations are able to get the appointments or have already received them. And so what I've been doing, because I know, because I'm as interested in that as you are, is that I've been at 20 schools the last, since last Monday, and that is one of the questions I ask every single principal. If I talk to a teacher, I say, well, have you been able to access, you know, vaccination? I can't ask them, did you get your vaccine? Because then we, we would be violating some personal privacy issues. But, you know, have you, have you been able to access it? And, and so I've yet to have anyone tell me that there has been any problems accessing it. Now, that doesn't mean that there haven't been, but I have not heard any outcry that people have not been able to access a vaccination site or an appointment for a vaccination. And of course, then some people will just come up and volunteer that information and tell you they've been vaccinated too, which is fine. But, so I've asked that at all the schools, I was on with the teacher reps yesterday from all the middle and high schools, asked that question. Nobody had any concerns about that. So based on, on that anecdotal data, I feel like we're in a pretty good spot, and then the Health Alliance is going, going really, really strong, and they want to encourage more Phase 3 folks to sign up, come out, and get their shots. So I will inquire with the, the Health Alliance about scheduling appointments at the schools or having school nurses do them. When we asked about that about a month or two ago, they were not, they did not have the capacity yet to do that because of the, the cold storage that's required with the vaccines and the staffing. But I will, we're in a different, we're in a different phase now, so I'll ask that question again to see if that could be a possibility. And in terms of students, I know there's an age limit, and I think it varies depending on the, which vaccination it is, somewhere in the teens, I think it's 15 or 16. So, so younger than that cannot receive the vaccinations because of the lack of studies on that. So, but I feel like we're in a good spot on the vaccinations, and I do, you know, if anybody's watching or you're listening, and if you've had difficulty with that, please reach out and let me know so that, so that I can work with the Health Alliance and make sure that happens.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter, was that it?
The only other thing, I was kind of concerned with the Duke, you know, who we have to report to if we do this. Do you see this as a problem? Because if we have to report to someone else, is this going to kind of tie our hands on anything? Because a lot of times, if we have to report to somebody, to the state, sometimes it ties our hands up on what we can do, and then they come back and say, well, you're going to have to do this, or you're going to have to do this. Do you think that this may, if we have to do this, is it going to tie our hands up to say, well, if we've got to report to them, then in return, then they can say, you're going to have to do this, or you're going to have to do this? And then they said $500,000 is allocated to this organization. Well, in a state of 100 counties and a lot more schools, $500,000 is not going to go far. So who's going to foot that bill? I am very concerned with this. Now, maybe the rest of you aren't, but a lot of times when something like that happens, you know who ends up footing the bill, and it's going to you know who ends up footing the bill and it's going to be the taxpayers. So I'm concerned about that. Now, maybe y'all weren't concerned about that, but it, it sends a red flag to me.
Yeah, so that's sort of an area of question for me too, Ms. Carpenter. I, I think, I'm not, I'm, I don't know that I'm as concerned about it because there are districts in North Carolina that have already been participating with the ABC Collaborative and been submitting data to them. We're, we're pretty data-rich in terms of the information that we have between the Health Alliance and the school district. And I've, I actually presented that information about this submitting data to the Health Alliance on Thursday as kind of a problem of practice to discuss with them and feel like we'll have their support if we need it on that. So, but they're, they're like, they're like us, there's, we, that's not been clearly defined yet about what data points they're looking for. But the ABC Data Collaborative, and it is one of those where two entities who are usually opposed, UNC Chapel Hill and Duke, have come together and they actually worked together on that, with, with that initiative. So it's the medical school at UNC and, and Duke that actually work on that together. And so it's not an unknown in terms of the districts that are participating, they know what they're submitting, they've committed to that and they've been doing that. So I don't feel like it's going to be a super-heavy lift on staff and, you know, and if we can get the, the Health Alliance to work with us on the data as well, I think that will, will really help us out.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter, is that it?
Ms. Blackwell?
I am so excited that we are here. I mean, honestly, that is just how I feel. I feel a little bit of relief, which I haven't felt in a really long time. Brian, thank you so much for, I mean, when this happened, you immediately jumped on it and knew that we were hoping to get this, you know, pushed out ASAP. So I, I just got to tell you, I'm just really impressed with what you've done. Thank you for the slideshow and working with the task group and everything. So it's just, it's awesome. I wish we could do five days a week, I will settle for four. I'm just happy to get these kids back in school four days a week. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
I was just going to talk, I'm not sure I'm echoing. Am I echoing for you guys?
We can hear you. I'm sorry, I couldn't understand what you said, though. Say that one more time.
Am I echoing?
No, you're not echoing, you're, you're fine.
Okay. So I was also on that task force this morning, so I heard a lot of this information already. I just wanted to thank you to Brian, thank you to the task force and thank you to our community for working together to get a lot of this already done, so we're prepared for it. The one concern that I did have was, did I hear April 13th as a potential start date for if we were to decide on A? Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. The only concern I have is, are we saying that our teachers will be able to have the opportunity to be vaccinated by then?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to repeat that because now you are breaking up just a little bit.
Okay, I was asking, did we say our teachers were going to have the opportunity to be vaccinated or get their second dose?
She's asking about.
Yeah, I think it all depends on when they receive their first dose, Ms. Sandage, and, but certainly, I mean, that is four weeks from to, or four weeks from tomorrow, or it's a month from tomorrow. So that certainly, you know, we know that, that it's a four-week waiting period for Moderna, it's three weeks for the Pfizer vaccine. So certainly if they've already received their first one, that's well within that window. So it, it, that's another reason why, you know, a month for now, from now and starting after spring break does allow to get more shots in arms, either the first or second dose. So, so I think we feel pretty confident in that, that that timeframe allows for more, more vaccinations and the immunity to build up.
Ms. Sandage?
Okay, great. And then I had just one more question I had for this morning, I asked about social distancing and I just wanted to see if you can kind of elaborate on that discussion just for the viewing audience, so we can understand, you know, how, how we will be tasked after what our discussion was around that.
Yeah, I think it'll, that will be a, a, school by school, they'll have to take a look at that. So once the commitment forms come back, they'll be able to know how many students per classroom and how far in each classroom they'll be able to distance. Under Plan A, there is no, there, what they call minimal distancing, I also like to call it maximizing the distancing with the space that you have. So the six foot, the six feet distancing in classrooms and buses does, is, is not the rule anymore. And then what, what our staff will do is maximize the space in between students with the space that they have to work with. And in some cases, that may mean they need to relocate.
Is now joining.
They may need to relocate to a different area. It may sometimes just mean that they, they space out in their classroom. I've been able to walk in middle schools where, where middle schools are where we think that we're, we'll probably have the, the most, or the least amount of distancing because of the size of the classrooms and that we, we think that more middle schoolers will return than even high schoolers. And so I was, actually spent some time at a couple of middle schools this week, looking at sample classrooms and how they have it set up. And what they're doing right now is removing any unnecessary furniture to be able to maximize the space in the classrooms and then maintain the, the maximum amount of distance that they can with the number of students that they have in the classroom. So that will all be determined, once we get the commitment forms, teachers and principals will take a look at that and we'll have to reinforce, you know, protocols, traveling protocols, meaning transitioning from classroom to classroom in the hallways and those types of things, because we do expect a six feet distancing while they're in the hallways and in, and gathering areas and things like that. And it may be that, again, you know, one of the recommendations of the task force was to, you know, maximize every space in the school. So that, that's exactly what they'll, what they'll be looking at to make sure that our students are as, as far distance apart as they can be.
Ms. Sandage, did you have?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. And Mr. Walter, I think you just joined us?
I did, I'm fine.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I don't.
Rob, did you say I do not?
I don't.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so I was on that meeting today as well and all that information was absolutely great. And I also appreciate you getting on this just immediately when you called and said, hey, we probably need a special call meeting. I think everybody was more excited about this one than the, anything we've actually dealt with in the past. So I appreciate that. So at this point in time, I will entertain a motion, if the board feels it's time to, okay. And I'm just going to say, if I'll just entertain a motion, that we approve the reopening plan to begin six through 12 on April the 13th in Plan A. Still moved.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I'm saying aye with the thing with.
Will you key up, please?
I'm saying aye, but that's with Brian getting on the stick and making sure that we get as many vaccinations in the arms of all our staff as possible. So I will go along with it, with that little added thing in the, in the, in the background, okay?
Okay, that's great. So, Mr. Walter, you are my one opposed, one nay?
No, I'm a yes.
I'm sorry?
We need to get kids back in, we need to get kids back at school, so yes.
You are yes, I'm sorry. Okay, so all, let's do that one more time. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Great. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. So board, we also have a need to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3 for attorney-client privilege and also 143-31811A6 for personnel. May I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. And we will say good night to the viewing audience or good evening. We appreciate you being with us tonight and we will see you April the 12th, Monday, for the Cabarrus County Board of Education's work session. Thank you.